All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by committee chairs. If any other persons present are doing the same, you must notify the chairperson at this time. All right, seeing none, can we get a roll call?
Currently, President Gilmore.
Here.
Vice President Gwynn.
Here.
Counselor Disorder, I don't see that she has logged in yet, so I will come back to her. Counselor Elmer.
Here.
Counselor Forgé.
Here.
And Counselor Bottomley.
Here.
And Counselor Disorder.
We just talked up.
Yep, you did. Thank you, Jenny. Counselor Disorder. You are, Madam President, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Let's see, so President's Notes, Policies and Procedures to Resume In-Person Counsel Meetings and Only Keep Subcommittee's Virtual. So this came up after our last vote. Somebody sent an email asking about whether or not it would be appropriate to have a compromise. Maybe it would be more palatable for city councilors to keep the the subcommittees remote and just have the meetings in person, the regular full council meetings in person. So we're tossing that out for the group to discuss. Anyone who wants to jump in? Any member of this committee who wants to jump in, just go ahead and.
Do we have a timeframe that we were thinking about for that? And and maybe Danny can tell us, is there anything new on hybrid? Hi, Danny.
Yeah, let's see if we can get an update on the technology and maybe that'll help inform our discussion.
Okay, thanks. I saw this on the agenda and I'm here tonight on behalf of the mayor because she is at the school committee meeting. So I went ahead and I know that lots has been happening. If anybody's been in City Hall, they'll see that meeting room is equipped with a lot of equipment right now. We are about two weeks away from the Zoom room in City Hall being ready to go. So this is a smaller room. And then in the John Zahn Center, we had supply chain issues last time I talked to you guys. We had two parts outstanding. We only have one part now, but we don't have an ETA on that. So smaller hybrid meetings are going to be possible in the City Hall building in about two weeks.
Okay, but we don't have an ETA for the John Zahn Center?
It's a piece of equipment that is, we're waiting to arrive. If that gets updated with an accurate delivery date, I can let you guys know via email in between meetings.
Okay, I just want to make sure I had it straight.
So Sheila, was your concern with the John Zahn Center not having the equipment? That the people that do want to tune in remotely, I mean, trying to make sure that we're looking at it from the same way?
Well, yeah, and we've already talked about how this is kind of like three very different things that feel like they're all the same. Because we just voted to allow remote participation for councilors. So even when we do eventually go back in person, if counselor is out of town for, you know, they would still be able to either phone in or Zoom in, however it's set up, and they could still participate. What we have not talked about, well, I mean, we've talked about it, but we haven't voted on anything yet, is having hybrid meetings where the public could also participate remotely. And that would presumably be during public comment or in the rare instance that we have someone who, you know, needs to speak to us about, you know, if they have some special knowledge that they're sharing with the city council. For example, David Sanger, who's here tonight, has spoken to A&amp;O a number of times about the Charter Review Committee. So if we were having a discussion where we wanted to bring someone in like that, whether or not they would be able to participate remotely.
Kathy, I think, had something, Sheila.
Oh, I'm sorry, I should put the chat. Here we go. Yes, please.
So the last thing I read about hybrid meetings was, Danny, correct me if I'm wrong, if you know more than I do, because I don't know a whole lot. So I'm gonna say that right out. I haven't really paid attention to it. It's not time yet. We aren't able to go through hybrid. But hybrid meetings, much like remote participation, are for council and members, committee, committee members only. It's not whether the public can attend by hybrid or whether they can communicate through hybrid. It's the committee, the board, not the public.
Well, I understand. Yeah, I understand that, but there have been a number of folks who have just expressed interest in that being a possibility, you know, because even when, you know, we're out of the pandemic and we're kind of going back to normal again. We have folks that, you know, have disabilities, you know, we have folks that, you know, maybe they have childcare issues, but they do want to be able to participate to whatever extent they can. So by opening up participation with the public, you know, I don't know if there's a legal mechanism for us to do that, but it is something that people have expressed an interest in.
Can we just request Kathy to take a look at that and see if there's any update from the Commonwealth on that participation from noncommittee members?
I will if that's acceptable.
I think that would be great, and I don't think that it has to be like a lot of heavy duty research, but I mean, if you could just reach out to the clerks in your network and ask them if anyone does this already? And how is it working for them? Because if no one is doing it, then, you know, a counselor should probably take that on, because I know you've already got a lot that you're doing. But if you can send a quick note out and you get a couple of responses, then we know if someone else is doing it, then we can see how it's working for them.
I'll ask.
And then my only thing would obviously to find out the legality of it, you know, in addition. Because if it's not a, if it's not a policy, you know, then, then we can't create it if it's a state policy.
Right, yeah, I'm not trying to get anyone put in jail. We're not going rogue.
I'll cover both bases.
Although if you, if.
You froze.
Yeah. She just frozen just to let you know.
Illegal, like, oh, did I freeze?
You're freezing.
Okay, let me turn off my video. It's okay, you didn't miss anything. I just made a really bad joke.
Now we can hear you, actually. You're not freezing now, so it's all good.
Okay, I'll spare you the bad joke. I'll save those for my kids.
Okay. Actually, you sort of did have her hand up.
I think, I think there's several municipalities in Massachusetts that are doing that. And I do think we definitely have to find out where, you know, Mass General Law comes down on it, but is this, when we were in the middle of the pandemic, I remember researching that. And there were many towns that were doing that, and I thought it was a great advantage to people who, for whatever reason, people couldn't drive at night, people with children, people with a disability could participate both ways, because our attendance has actually been on the uptick via the remote, but I certainly can see the advantages. There's a lot that's lost in a remote meeting. You can't give a goodbye gift to somebody in a remote meeting. You know, there's things like that, and I thought where the numbers are going down, so I think that was a compromise that I'm willing to look at. You know, for the big meetings. So, but that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, go ahead, Danny.
So the updated, the, the updated extension of the certain COVID-related measures is it's through, it's through July 15th. So their other municipalities are doing it because they happen to have the technology in place for hybrid. So that's that third one, so in-person, hybrid and online. They can do the online or hybrid till July 15th. What's not clear and needs a little bit more info is how, after July 15th, we can do, are we allowed to do hybrid meetings? I believe, but Kathy will be doing the research on this, I guess. I believe it would be that you'd need a quorum of the body in person and the space, but then others, including the public, are allowed to participate remotely. And if that is true, we will be set up for that. Then, I don't, it's taken so long. It's, we're gonna be out of this, but we're working on it. It's still gonna be really cool. So that's what my understanding is, but we'll dive deeper into that here, employees. I can help look into some of that.
That'd be great. So I, I think, well, I mean, do any other councilors have anything that they want to say before I just start jumping to conclusions?
Counselor Elmer has his hand up.
Oh, please, Counselor Elmer.
Hi, Sheila.
Hi.
I think the idea of hybrid, when we have the equipment for the full council and keep on remote for smaller meetings is a good one, a good compromise. I need to point out the irony that we have a small room set up for hybrid and not a big room. But I, I think your idea was a good one, so I support that.
Okay, so my sense moving forward is that we're gonna keep talking about this and send it to the full council until we vote to go back to our in-person meetings. So I say we put this on the council agenda and huh? Did some, was someone trying to get my attention?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, I'm hearing things, that's all. So if we move this to the full council agenda and then, you know, if councilors want everything to be all in person, there can be amendments to this motion. It doesn't have to go through exactly as written. But yeah, so we will take that one back up again.
Um, point of clarification.
Yes.
Um, I don't believe this has to go to a vote if the, if you were so in tune to go to this procedure, you, I, I believe you can institute that until it's looked at further. It doesn't have to go back to the full council. If you said we are gonna go to full meetings in person and, and committee, subcommittee meetings, virtual, that, I don't believe it has to go back. You might want it to go back, but I don't believe it has to.
I know that it doesn't have to.
Okay.
Um, I feel like at the last meeting, there was only one person who voted to go back in person. And I don't want to start throwing my weight around and strong arm, you know, we're all supposed to be working together as a team. So this is sort of like a little bit of a compromise and we'll see how people feel about that. And, you know, I don't want to get into people's, you know, health or their, you know, families or anything like that. So if there's a reason why a person really doesn't feel comfortable meeting in person, I don't want to have to compromise them and make them feel like they have to out themselves. So you know, and I think that if it was a closer vote, if it was like more of a 50-50 split, then maybe I would feel comfortable saying, okay, here's a compromise and I'm gonna lay it down, but it was, it was not close. So unless we have more on that, I'm happy to move on. Okay, so the proposed amendments to the rules of procedure, we brought this up last month, but it wasn't quite ready for showtime. Is there more to report on that now, Kathy?
So Tammy will be working on an up, an updated version, but a document to clarify for the council why we've made these recommendations. So that you can, you know, you can see the logic behind proposed procedure amendment, and you can decide, you know, whether you like the possible amendments or not with our logic, so that it gives you a bit of a glimpse.
So is the thought, I see it on my agenda for A&amp;O, so is, is the thought that Tammy will and Kathy will bring that to A&amp;O? Where do you, where would you like to see that, Sheila?
I think that it would be fine for it to start off at A&amp;O, and then I don't know if you expect to make quick work of this, if we want to put it on the council agenda, or do you think you want to hold on to it for a little bit?
Kathy, any opinion on that? I'll just lean towards you. Is it something that we should bring up and then we'll be ready, or is it gonna be one where I'm gonna need a meeting in case we make recommendations?
So let me just look at the calendar and find out. So your A&amp;O meeting is next Wednesday?
Yeah. And that only gives us, and then, then the full council meeting is the following Wednesday, correct?
Yeah, um, correct. So can we leave it on A&amp;O? And then depending on the report of committee, possibly send it to council? If it's, if they review it? And magically agree with everything in it?
Yeah, so why don't, why don't we look at it at A&amp;O? And we'll make a recommendation whether we're ready to put it on full council agenda in March, or it would be held one month, April. Maybe there's a point that we have to research. And A&amp;O can then move it forward. That would be my thought.
Okay, and I would say if it's not ready for showtime in March, I know that people are gonna want to devote a lot of time to budget season, so I would be okay with it not coming back until after the budget gets voted. So that people aren't, you know, voting at midnight, bleary-eyed and tired. We can have a thoughtful discussion about it. So I would say no rush, unless you, you know, if you look at it and it looks like it's gonna be quick, that would be fine.
That, that's what I was gonna recommend to President Gilmore. I'll just, we'll take a look and if it looks like it's a maintenance piece and it's not gonna take a lot of discussion, we can move it forward. If not, we'll, we'll hold it till a future agreed upon time.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Okay.
All right, so the next one is that submission from Counselor Healy, and that one was for EDC specifically, and that's the Proposals on Properties in the Industrial Park. Phil, do you have a good sense of what he means by this? Because I don't, I don't know if I'm, maybe I, maybe I missed something. I'm not sure if I understand the context.
Phil, you're muted if you're talking. Still can't hear you.
Was there a question to me?
Yeah, I was just wondering if you had a good sense of the context, because I don't, I don't remember the discussion that, that brought this forward.
I'm sorry, the, I, I had bandwidth problems and I was, I wasn't hearing. What, what issue are we talking about?
Counselor Healy had brought up, he wanted to know about requests for proposals on properties in an industrial park. And I was just wondering if you had context, and if you, if you don't have any context, it's, that's fine.
I don't, I will, we'll talk about, we'll find out about it on next Tuesday.
Okay.
I'll pick it up. He didn't ask me about it.
Oh, I thought, okay, I thought you must have copied on the email.
I, I probably was, I probably was. I'm having email overload. And my dog died, so I'm not quite myself.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. He lived, he was 14 years old, 93. He, he had a full life. Anyway, so I'm getting back.
So sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and we'll put that on your agenda and we'll just put it up as a discussion item. So I'm not sure if there's any kind of motion attached to it or not. And then we have parking and bike lanes on Main Street, which is also gonna go to EDC.
This one.
Right, we, we have a pretty full agenda when we get to EDC and that, that might, that might use, could use another month. I know that the issue is coming up at the Sustainable Greenfield Implementation Committee before our, before the next meeting, so we'll know more.
Okay.
I can report. I can, I can tell you that we've learned a little bit about, I don't know, there was a, a meeting, a Greenfield Business Association meeting, and a lot of hot button issues got raised. And I'm trying to figure out if there's a compromise. So I'd love to get Jeff Saucer and Marlo and Eric Torog in a room together, but maybe not, maybe not next week.
Okay, well, I think we could just keep this on President's Notes until then. Kathy?
When you're done with this, can we go back one to the invitation of Marla Warner?
Yeah, I just saw that.
Okay, no problem.
I was gonna try and fake it, Kathy. You called me out.
Sorry, it's my job.
It's okay. You know, I know, it's okay. I was hoping that you wouldn't catch me before I caught myself. All right, so, yeah, Marla Warner is gonna come to our full council meeting in March. You know, as, as we all know, the DPW budget is significant. And they do a lot of work around town, and it would be a really good idea, especially for the new councilors, to sort of learn about some of what's going on. So, and Marlo, if you're still free in March, I would love to have you.
Yeah, sure thing. Thank you, President Gilmore. I, I think we got so many things going on, I could think of a full evening of the city council's time. I'll hit the main bullets of what we, what we're buttoning up in the past year and what we got coming up. There's a lot changing day by day. This is our busiest time of the year, getting ready for construction season, so if councilors want to reach out to me on a specific project they want to hear about, that would be great. Otherwise, I'm gonna kind of bullet, bullet, bullet point the, the big project, the big things coming up, so feel free to ask for anything you would like me to report on.
Yeah, I think, I think that's perfect. I think updating us just so we know what's going on is gonna be the most important thing. And then I know that there was, there was an email that came through today that Jenny had sent out about a sidewalk ordinance, and I haven't had a chance to review that yet, so if that, you know, ends up going, you know, becoming a topic, you maybe you might want to be prepared in case folks have questions about that.
Yeah, I, I think I responded to Council Disorder on that. As far as who handles that ordinance and the, the appropriate folks that handle that.
Oh, so that's not DPW?
Private sidewalk ordinance is, is covered under enforcement, which is generally parking enforcement. So that's how I responded to Council Disorder.
Okay, great. All right.
If it's a city sidewalk problem, I want to know about it. That's ours, DPW, so.
Right, right. Okay, so next I have FY23 Capital Budget and Budget Procedures. So Chris, that's gonna go to you.
Yes, we have already received from Liz Gilman, the copies of the capital as the mayor has decided and selected. Everyone should, at this point, have those, and I'd like to, as we get into, I'd like to set up a schedule, start to set up a schedule with all of those folks so that we can get a handle on what's coming down the pike. I also noted, so I guess this is a procedural question for Kathy perhaps, I also noted that there's a first reading on this capital budget. So do we have to wait for the first reading on council floor? Before Ways and Means can address it? Or can we just go ahead and address it at this meeting coming up before our council meeting?
So by addressing it, do you mean voting on it, or do you mean discussing it?
Well, it would be a discussion. I'd like to go through all of the capital budget pieces first and then leave the vote to, as a wrap-up piece. So I didn't know if that would interfere with the first reading.
Yep, so discussing it will not interfere with the first reading, and frankly, voting on it won't either, because the first reading, second reading and public hearing is a council process. It's not a Ways and Means process. So are you thinking of discussing the capital budget items with your committee? And then seeing what department heads you'd like to invite along with the mayor?
No, I'd actually like my, my, my first piece is I would actually like to invite the department heads to discuss. I think it's important that the requests that are in the capital budget, that we have every department that is listed as a capital expenditure come and talk to Ways and Means about it. I just think it makes for a good connections and good communication to have that happen. And I'd also like to, I would like to start out with the, with the Police Department budget first.
Okay.
So that's what I get, what I'd like to, I'd like to invite the chief, the mayor, Public Safety Commissioners, Danny, whoever else wants to come to the meeting. I'd like to invite them to come to our meeting in March. And we will entertain the Police Department budget at our March meeting.
Okay. We can definitely put that together and list the, the PD capital budget items on the agenda to be discussed. Do you, so you're not, you're not interested in voting on them right now? You're just interested in discussing?
Yes, I think part of the issue, I think it's wiser not to vote until the end of all the discussions. Because again, it's a big capital piece, and maybe there's a recommendation for or against something, and we really need to take it as a larger number, budgetary number as well. So if there's like an impact somewhere along the line that doesn't make it through, we, we certainly have the understanding of what that fiscal impact would be. Reminding ourselves, however, that we are only there to offer our recommendation to the full council.
Right, so maybe now would be a good time. I'm sorry, President Gilmore, is it okay if I continue to have a conversation with Counselor Forgé?
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe now would be a good time for you and Tammy and I to get together and look at a capital and an operating budget meeting schedule.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, that we can plan ahead, we can give the department heads a little bit of notice, find out if they are, are not gonna be able to attend on that specific date, you know, like we usually do.
Okay, that's fair enough. I'd like to start off with police if I could.
Thank you.
And when is that meeting, when's their meeting, just point of clarification?
It's, it's, it's the 15th.
Okay.
Would be the 15th of March, 5:30.
All right, so moving on. The easement between City of Greenfield and Hoxton Reed located at 289 Main Street. This makes me feel like it's more of an EDC thing? Unless someone else has a strong opinion, that's kind of where I'm leaning?
I would concur.
I agree.
I'm sorry, EDC, was that the decision?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, mayor's appointments and reappointments, that's gonna go to A&amp;O as usual.
Yes.
Yes.
And then requests for a monthly update on status of staffing, including vacancies and candidates for potential hiring. Um instead of having that be separate, I think since the mayor addresses the city council at most of our meeting, I know she wasn't there at the last meeting, um but she normally comes to those meetings. So I think that counselors are free to ask questions there. And you know, maybe, I mean Danny, if you can let her know that, you know, people are interested in that so that, you know, she doesn't get sort of blindsided by a question she's not prepared for that, you know.
She knows. Um I think that is the appropriate place for it. I don't think um a monthly report is something that would be, it would be, it would, you know, I'm the chief of staff and so as such, I'm the director of administration and the those vacancies in those departments come through me ultimately. So I didn't want to prepare that report monthly. So we'll just be prepared for those questions um at the regular meeting.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that makes more sense than a written report because I know that we got so much documentation. Let's see. And then, okay, this is this is the fun part. All right. I'm gonna caution everybody that we are not using names here, but we do need to talk about um conduct. And I've I've looked at Robert's rules. Our rules of procedure are only a few pages long. Um I've looked at Robert's rules, which was not an enjoyable read, but you know, sometimes you have to. Um and I think that, you know, the onus is basically on everyone as an individual. There is um, you know, so I need to make sure that I'm keeping our meetings on track and making sure that we are being productive and that we are working together as a team. And that doesn't mean that we always have to vote the same way. Not every vote's gonna be unanimous. A lot of them are, and that's great. Um so I have to make sure that we are moving forward and doing what's right for Greenfield. And it's more difficult for me to do that if there are disruptions, obviously. Um when there are disruptions, there is not a, it doesn't seem like there is a lot in terms of consequences other than censure is basically, you know, you call someone out on the carpet, you tell them that their behavior is unacceptable and you can ask for an apology. And I kind of struggle with that because I feel like, you know, accountability is so important. So if other folks have some thoughts, I'd like to hear them. I just want to make sure that this doesn't turn into well, no, I just wanna, I wanna hear what folks are thinking. Just we're speaking in general terms, though. Yes, Chris.
Thank you. Um well, I went, I went and looked at our uh council rules of procedure. It does address uh with behavior issues. It basically does say that we will all conduct ourselves in a certain manner with a certain level of professionalism. And um and I think that that's a good start. My suggestion at this particular moment um is that not to give A and O any anything else to do, or maybe an ad hoc committee. I don't know how this would um play out. But I think because there is some, there's, there are things missing from our our rules of procedure and our codes in regard to um how we can handle you know, certain incidents that arise and may arise. So it might be what I'm thinking about as a teachable moment where we go ahead, look at the language that's there. If the language doesn't suit our need, then we need to craft a language that would enable us to better perform our duties and our functions. Um and I'll leave it at that. I'll let other counselors weigh in on that.
Yeah, could I get Dan and then Kathy?
I believe um it would be an appropriate time to send this to A and O for the reason that Kathy and I are gonna be working on the rules of procedure which were proposed. And if it falls into that category, we can maybe uh collate them into the the same thought pattern. And maybe it will take a little longer. But at the same time, I want to talk more about now. I don't believe we should kick this can down the road. Um I believe that we've got to look at precedent. We got to look at, you know, procedure, we got to look at policy and make sure that we're following it. Um we cannot act disrespectful to our counselors. Uh you know, I wouldn't want the yong. It's all about respect. It doesn't mean you can't disagree. I disagree with people every day, you know what I mean? But you do it with, we do it with a sense of this is not a personal attack. It's all about the business that we're doing and it's a disagreement. And when that gets violated or that gets stepped on, it's gotta be addressed because it's just sets a precedent that that's unacceptable. Um I don't feel that anyone should talk to the council like that from the public or any other office. I don't think counselors should talk to each other in that disrespect. I don't think we should talk to city officials in that way, and they shouldn't talk to us that way. So in order to keep that balance going, we have to address it as we see it happen or it then becomes the new precedent that it's acceptable.
So no, and I I I agree with you, but I think the only tool I see in the tool belt is if the council votes to have someone removed from a meeting because they're being that disruptive.
Right.
But that would
I'm sorry.
No, I just, as far, from what I can see, the council can vote to have someone removed from a meeting if they're disruptive during the meeting. But before it gets to that point, you know, they would have to be ruled out of order and then given a chance to correct themselves. And like I said, when it comes back down to accountability, I don't see it, I don't really see how the council really has power to dole out consequences.
Right, I would, as we talked about um with a discussion that you and I had, I think um I think it falls upon some of the the administration of this council to make sure that it's addressed on a one-on-one situation. Um I I think it 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 calls upon yourself and myself uh as as officers and and the leadership of the council to address it and then and see where it goes. I I think that has to be done. Um it would be the same procedure I would follow if I thought that that someone was talking to the council in that way, you know. When I'm, when I'm monitoring the public comment, we're very quick to say to people, that's not acceptable. If you do that, we're gonna mute you. If you do it again, I'm gonna eject you. Um you know, that has to be addressed immediately. So I I'll go back to that. I think, like we said, I think it needs to be addressed. Um I remember, and I think Counselor Elmer will recall, you know, as as when he was coming back uh on the council, there was a brief moment where he had a disagreement with me in like one of our first meetings. And um we discussed it after the fact. That's just not, and he and he said, didn't mean anything by it, Dan, you know, we we moved on, but we didn't wait and and let it sit there. We we talked about it and we moved on and that's what we've got to do. It's gotta be, it's gotta be brought. And then if it's not followed, then we look at that other situations. And that's once again, my opinion. It it's, it, you know, I'm just saying, I think that's where we have to be on on both sides. And and there, we have crossover happening right now in all of us. I think I think we have some problems within council. I think we have had recent problems within the public, the way they're speaking to council. And I think we have city official conversations that aren't quite appropriate at the moment. And I think it's time we talk about all.
Yeah, we should. Uh but I said I was gonna recognize Kathy, too.
So there have been a few instances in my time, and my time goes back a couple of years, that people have, that people um residents, citizens, people attending meetings have been asked to leave. They have been ejected ejected from meeting, whether it was in person or virtual. Not so much virtual, it's been pretty okay. Um sometimes the behavior isn't just at council meetings. Sometimes the behavior is when people come into city offices. Um sometimes the behavior is when people take out papers to run for office. Um it it happens. Um I believe there should be something done sooner rather than later because sometimes it continues. Um and I simply want counselors to know that it doesn't just happen at council meetings. And that's all I think I can say right now.
Right. I think that sometimes the behavior that we see at council meetings is an indication of what we would expect outside of a council meeting. Um and where I'm looking for feedback here is recognizing that I'm not, you know, really, I mean, like, I'm not anybody's mom. I can't ground anyone. I can't, you know, I it I don't want to minimize this. I'm just, I'm I'm really questioning like what is available to me other than, you know, censure? And, you know, I mean, I've picked up the phone, I had conversations with people. Um and I'm happy to do that. But beyond having a conversation.
I think a written warning is appropriate. That's what I think.
Right, we can do, yeah. No, I think we could do a written warning. If this is something that, if this is gonna be a procedure that we're gonna take up and it's gonna be applied, you know, not selectively, but it, you know, in any case, that would be fine, too.
I think it it puts it to um a different level. I mean, Kathy is
I agree. Well, and my, I think why I'm struggling here is my goal here is not to embarrass somebody or to make them feel bad. My goal here is to maintain order during the meetings. So if a written warning or a verbal warning doesn't maintain order during the future meetings, then it feels like I'm not accomplishing what I'm trying to accomplish. Uh there's just that, like the symbolic gesture. And I mean, there might be some value in the symbolic gesture, too, but it, you know, it doesn't mean that the meetings would be less disruptive. Chris?
Thank you. Well, to my way of thinking, um we vote a president, a vice president and a treasurer um as our panel of officers. And with with, by doing that, we endow them with certain privileges. And one of them is the care of the council. And so um we basically um have, by virtue of voting uh people into the the top slots, have in in given you tacit um uh, you know, responsibilities in regard to seeing that not only is order maintained, but that the council is able to conduct its business. It is very disruptive if you're, if you cannot do that. And we are tasked with this job and we all ran for it for a certain reason. So we could be able to help um at this point. Um when there's a situation where there is um conflict, uh the, you know, and people always say, well, I I can get an apology. Yeah, you know, that's, that's okay. Sheila, you and I have have gone at it and I apologized and everything else. I get that. Um but you have to wonder sometimes whether the person is doing an apology because they're forced to do the apology or if they're truly meaning, you know, meaningful in the apology. Is it because you got caught that you're apologizing? Or is it because that you you really mean what you're you're saying and you're doing? Um there's also a few, there's another another piece of this, too. It's just um, it's just a a protocol piece as well. Um I ju, I'm strongly, again, I'm strongly um of the opinion that when something like uh what happened at our last meeting happens again, then basically the responsibility is not on on the council leadership. The responsibility is on the the shoulders of the person who caused the conflict. So I I know how, you know, the heart wants what the heart wants. But on the other hand, I just think the council should be business, it should be procedure, it should be protocol, and it has an expectation that its officers will um you know, stand up uh and maintain order and keep us on track to do our business. And I agree with the letter.
Yes, John.
Um I do want to say we were able to do our business. I I don't sense that we we were not, we were able to do our business at the last council meeting. Um one concern I have is in general with conflict is we want to try to escalate. I worry about things like censure becoming escalating a conflict. Um so it, I don't know, it's a delicate issue um and how how these issues are handled. But I do worry about escalating conflict or something that would would involve censure. I'm assuming vows of vote of the council uh which would certainly create a lot of conflict. So I I don't, I don't know where to go. I, we don't, maybe looking at our procedures helps, but it's a difficult situation to know how how to, what the best approach is.
So I don't think censure goes to a vote of the council, but I know that if we had, if we were in a situation, if a counselor became so belligerent that we could not conduct our business and they would not, they would not sit and and, you know, sit quietly and respectfully while other folks are speaking. And it got to a point where we needed to eject them, which, you know, as as Kathy mentioned, we've had to do that with members of the public before. I believe to, and this is, I read this two weeks ago, but I believe to do that, we would have to have a vote of the council. I I couldn't just unilaterally toss someone out of the room. My concern is repeated behavior. So after you speak to somebody
Yeah, yeah.
about the same issue a couple of times, um that's kind of I feel like that's where we're at at this point.
I think Kathy has something, um President Gilmore.
Oh, good, yeah, go please, please don't bet. I can't see six people at a time.
That's okay, sorry. Um actually, uh President Gilmore, as the president of the council, you have every right to eject anyone that you feel is not behaving properly from a meeting. And so does any chair of a committee. They have every right to eject them from the meeting. Um and if I may say something else, it all, sometimes it all depends on how long you've been dealing with it. So if you've been dealing with it for a couple of months already and some people who have only been dealing with it for, well, we're in the third month now. Um it gets a little frustrating.
I, no, I hear your frustration. I mean, I don't let people talk to my staff at work. Um and I know, I know exactly what you're trying to do. You've got people that you're supervising, they're in your care, you know, from nine to five. And I I know how you feel. I have, I have students who try to call and and parents who try to abuse my staff and I I have to be on the front line for them. So I I completely understand. What I'm really trying to get at here is what do we do to inspire a change in behavior?
I think we address the behavior. That's what I think. That's the first step. It has to be addressed in some way. And then, I mean, I had people arrested when I was the president of the council um from right in front of me. I called the police and I had them arrested. And um and then I continued my meeting. So there was no, there was no playbook when I had the police at my meeting. I did what I had to do to keep a meeting going. I I had something thrown at me, I had them arrested, I had them removed. Kathy remembers this, you know, so so we did all this. But there was no, you know, I didn't pause and get anybody's opinion. I called the police and the police came in and and it was dealt with. But I'm not saying we're at that level. I'm just saying sometimes we just have to deal with the point at hand. And I think it has to be addressed.
It does, yeah. But yeah, it's it's certainly not a a police matter at this point.
But, you know, yeah, no, I I was just making the point that we, you have to play the, you know, you've got to look at everything as an individual in this situation.
And may I
Danny Laterno has her hand up.
So I just wanted to say, and this was to piggyback on Council President Gilmore's statement that she understands about Kathy's position and and that the staff is in her care. The entire staff in this building is in my care. And I can tell you, and I know we've mentioned it before, we have had a major increase in bad behavior by the public coming into this building. I had a gentleman come into my office with my door shut, shut the door behind him and yell at me. A man I never met before. We had men come in aggro, all aggro in the mayor's office yelling at Caitlin. We've had people come in and throw pens and yell and scream about simple procedures downstairs. So where I'm going with this is that if we cannot keep some sort of decorum and and professional behavior, and we can't expect it from city counselors, what, how can I address that with the public coming into the city building? How can I protect employees in a public building from that kind of abuse? And it's super increased. It's been, it's been terrible. We had a we tested our panic buttons recently. We've never done that before. So I just want to make sure that, you know, I I wasn't at the meeting, I think, that everybody's talking about, but I've heard, you know, I've heard a few things. Leader, we need people to, who are in these positions to act as leaders to help show what kind of behavior is acceptable among adults in professional settings.
Agreed. Kathy, did I already recognize you for 6:47?
I did. Would you like to say more?
No, it's fine. I was gonna move on to Phil.
Okay, yeah.
I just didn't want to skip you.
Thank you.
I I think Dan's idea is a very good one. I think the two of you should draft a letter and let them know that's, let anyone who behaves that way that it's unacceptable. I think, I don't know if you can still hear me, but that I just want to close that. Thank you.
Yes, Phil, we can.
Done.
And was there more on this topic? Seems like the consensus is we're going to just nip it in the bud when it happens. And if we have to cut mics, I don't do we have the ability to do that in the Johns-on-Center? I know we can do it on Zoom, or, sorry, WebEx.
Do we have the ability to do what, Sheila? I'm sorry.
So on WebEx, if somebody is making a lot of noise, you can mute them. And normally, we do it because we're getting feedback. It's not because someone's getting belligerent. If that's, if we have to do that, is that something that's available to us at the Johns-on-Center?
So, if I may, yes, during an open public meeting, you can ask anyone to be silent. They are supposed to ask for permission to speak before they speak. If you do not grant it to them, or if you wish, you know, say they're making way too many comments under their breath, you can ask them to be silent. If they do not listen, you can ask them to leave the premises. You're, you you would order them to leave the premises. If they don't leave, I step outside and call the police and ask them to come and remove the person. My my cat wants to participate in the meeting. So you can do all of those things.
Okay.
Gilman does have her hand up.
Yes.
And Dan Gwynn. Liz, you are on mute. Liz Gilman?
You're muted.
Sorry, sorry. I worked in another municipality where we had a police officer at every meeting. So I kind of kept things in order right from the get-go. Also, you can adopt a code of ethics, if you so wish. I sent one to she, I just sent it to President Gilmore so she could look at it from East Hampton.
Did you just send it now?
Yeah, maybe a couple of minutes ago.
Oh, okay, okay. I I didn't remember sending an email from you. Okay. Yeah, I can take a look at that.
So anyway, it it's something to consider, especially if you know you're going to have a controversial topic at at a particular meeting.
Right. And I think that with the controversial topics, you know, people do get heated, and people sometimes, you know, say things in elegant ways. But I don't think I've seen anyone who has intentionally tried to be disruptive. I think that people just sort of have to rein themselves in, you know, I mean, prior to, prior to what I'm talking about. But, um, yes, Dan?
One thing that I think we have to remember, and this is something that has changed since WebEx, but I think we should go back to it. Counselors are not supposed to talk to each other at a council meeting. Questions are put through to the president or the chair, and then they're brought forward. The back and forth between counselors is a nonexisting point. And that's what happened early on. You know, I said, well, Counselor Forgji, I I did not like how you spoke. We don't address each other. That's not how it's done. It's just through the chair or through the president, and then it's moved, and they can ask you, may I talk? Can we do? Can? But that protocol is, that's why that was determined. And that's why that became the procedure. It wasn't because it's it's some kind of control effort. It is control. That's how it stopped. It stopped from people talking to each other in in a way. And I believe once we get back to a meeting where we're in a situation where everyone can be seen and everyone can be heard, and that if they will address, we did not ever address each other openly. It always was run through the president of the council. So I think those little subtleties are making a difference.
Yeah, that's true. And I'm not sure if every single new counselor necessarily knows that. Subcommittee meetings are a little bit more informal, so maybe we would have to formalize those while we're trying to correct this behavior.
Sheila, Danny Laterno has her hand up.
Oh, yes, please.
I just want to say one more thing. It's kind of interesting. We're having this conversation right at this moment. I just got word that they had to go into recess at the school committee meeting because of behavior, and they had to pause. They're discussing various controversial topics, I guess, like the mask mandate. And there is a city counselor there who expressed their opinion loudly before the recess. So.
All right.
Received.
All right, so we can tighten up communications going directly to the chair. We can, and even at the subcommittees, which has been a little bit less formal. I I don't know. I think I have a better understanding of the tools here, and I guess we'll just go forward, and we'll all try to encourage. I don't know. We'll, we'll just try to be our best selves. I don't
Can I ask Kathy?
I I do feel a bitter loss. But we're gonna, we're gonna employ these tools, and we're gonna see what happens, I suppose. Do we want, do we have other topics we want to bring up under this specific theme? Or do we want to move on to the subcommittees?
Sheila, you were frozen there for a little bit, and I heard. Or do we want to move on to subcommittees?
I said, do we have other topics we want to address under this theme?
I do not.
Okay. So in that case, we've got economic development. We have the topics we had already raised earlier in the meeting. The meeting is going to be March 8. It's going to be on WebEx for now. Okay, so we've got the zoning amendments.
Yeah, I can go through these quickly. The zoning, we had a joint public hearing with the planning board on these, they're fairly noncontroversial, but only three of the five committee members were there, so I'll have to bring them up to speed. The easement thing we discussed, I could, I could use a backgrounder on on how this deal was reached. I don't know whether it's MJ or or the mayor's office, MJ. We don't have to do it now, but if you just tell me if everybody's happy with this, that would be good to know. On the lot property, I think we can, just to simplify things, we can remove the subheadings all year. We had the PIP, and a lot of the hot button issues were raised. I think, I think the committee has to process this. I tried to invite, I did invite the DEP district person. She declined, but I had a long conversation with the staff, and there is, they are doing the audit. But the audit traditionally just means paperwork, reviewing the paperwork. But I urge them, they've been urged, and we will continue to urge them to ask for more testing. There haven't, there haven't been tests for three years. We don't really know what's going on in the water or the air. And I think we may have some flexibility on the part of 401 Liberty in terms of turning the passive system into an active system. It's about a $30,000 commitment, according to them. We we may be able to get the DEP to, they're not going to do anything unless the DEP tells them to, so that's where we're at, trying to get something done there. Anyway, we'll, it'll be continued discussion. We won't have a guest. The gas moratorium, Counselor Healy may have some numbers. And we'll hear about that. And you know, and we'll probably talk about bike lanes and parking just to get people up to speed. It's it feels like the third rail of greenfield politics. But it does seem like Economic Development Committee stuff. So that's that.
President Gilmore?
Yes.
So are we putting the bike lanes on the agenda for EDC?
Well, I think we're gonna save the bike lanes for after the SGIC meeting. Was that?
That's okay. All right, we can, we can postpone. We have enough on our plate. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, if you want it on there as a discussion item, and then if, you know, you have extra time and would like to, I think that that would be okay, too. I don't want to micromanage it. But it seems to me that if we're gonna have, you know, if we're expecting some really good information after the meeting, it makes sense that we might postpone.
Okay. Again.
So we'll hold. We won't put it on the agenda.
Yeah, and if we just keep it on president notes so that I don't forget.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's see, A and O, it's March 9. And, yeah, you've got a much lighter agenda this month, don't you?
Yeah, it's gonna be. I I do have another piece. So the mayor's appointments and reappointments, that is, yes. The nonemergency unmuffled comp compression, we're not ready to bring that back, so that can be removed from the agenda. And if, we're going to move up the proposed amendments to the rules of procedure, as you and I spoke on. We have another piece we didn't talk about at all, and that is the request to remove the fire chief from civil service, which I believe is appropriate to put at A and O if the mayor's office, I'm not sure where this is going, Kathy, but we haven't talked about it. It needs to go somewhere.
Thanks. Thanks for the in. So the fire chief had sent us an order, and we had sent it out to the council to consider a vote to repeal the provisions of chapter of section 48 of chapter 31 of the Massachusetts General Law relative to the appointment of its fire force under civil service rules as voted by the March 14, 1936 town meeting. So it's the Fire Force, not the Fire Chief. Some of you, little difference there. Some of you may remember a few years ago, and Chief Stran has joined us. The council voted to remove the police department, not the chief of police, in a very similar motions. As a matter of fact, that language was used to create this motion. So the police were removed previously, and the charter was amended to reflect the police and fire from being removed from civil service. This would be one of the last pieces to remove the Fire Force from civil service.
Yeah, because I know that the chief has to be voted out by the voters, because back then, that's how he came in, which we would have really interesting lawn signs if that was on the ballot.
And the fire chief is here at the meeting. He is on mute at the moment, so if you'd like him to speak, he would be able to do that.
Yeah, if you have something you want to add, I would love to hear from you.
No, I just want to add that you, you folks voted some charter changes, so there's nothing more that needs to be done with the charter, because you already did it with the police department. As it was said, the Fire Force was voted by town meeting, which is now city council. So they can be removed that way. The Fire Chief and Police Chief were voted in, at least the Fire Chief, and I know for certain was voted in by a town referendum. So whatever way you've come in by, from civil service is the way that you have to exit civil service. And so that's why there's two different approaches here. The rest of the fire department can be voted out by you. That that'll go to the legislation, and then we've already have the documentation to help us with the revocation of civil service. My position needs to be voted out by the, by a citywide vote.
President Gilmore, if I may add one more piece, I'm sorry. And the request is to put this vote, if it wants, if you wanted to go to subcommittee, completely fine, but to have this voted on at the council meeting in March.
I, yeah, I'd be fine with that. And I think when we did it with the police, I think it started with A and O for a recommendation, and then came up to the full council. So if we could do it that way.
That, yeah, so I would, you know, as as there's a sense of urgency, I would request that, and if we could ask Chief, the chief to be present at the A and O meeting to
Counselor, if I, if I may, real quick, I I just want to remind everybody that the contract that was ratified and funded through city council last month did have the agreement with the union to get out of civil service. So that was an important part for the fire department. It's in the contract, and that's why now it's time to move forward for the revocation for the fire department.
Okay, yes, Chris?
You're muted.
Thank you. I have a question. And I think it goes to you, Sheila, and Dan, and Kathy. And this is in regard to ordinance changes that are going to come forward as a result of charter changes. Because, so my question is, is there, it may, it seems to make sense to me that we wait until the charter changes have been approved in Boston before we change ordinance, but there are going to be a number of those, because the charter has changed, the ordinance has to change as well. Does that make sense?
That is my understanding.
Yeah, we don't want to put the cart before the horse, but maybe we should start maybe taking a look at language, perhaps after budget season, when people have a little more bandwidth, just so we're prepared.
Okay.
So
thank you.
So Kathy, I think that's all I need. If we can add that piece to the agenda for A and O and invite the chief and just to be there if, so we can get this on the next week's agenda.
Sounds great. Sounds great.
Okay. I have nothing more, Sheila. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. Ways and Means. Yep, you're gonna be doing lots of money stuff, as usual. Yep, you're gonna be doing lots of money stuff, as usual.
Yeah. And I would, we'd still like to continue a small discussion on the review of tax rates with the assessors, so I'd like them to be invited, if possible. That would be Assessor Gary and Assessor Geisman. The capital budget piece already indicated that we'll start with the police at our March meeting, and I will be meeting with Kathy and Tammy to set up a schedule for other capital pieces. And finally, I would like to have, I'd like to have the financials made available to the council via Ways and Means on the lump property. And I realize that's going to take a little bit of digging, but I would like to see that there are concerns in the community, and the best way to deal with the concerns is to, you know, look at the issue, deal with it, and reassure people everything went fine. I think that's a prudent thing to do. So I'm asking for financials on that project, the whole project, sorry. Sorry, everybody, sorry, Liz. But that's what I'm looking for, for the council to start on as well in our March meeting. That's it.
Yes, Liz. Oh, you're on mute.
I'm sorry. I just want to make the point that what is available to us has been given. Unfortunately, it's another system, and invoices are also in the basement, and so it's not an easy process for older things, because this project has gone on for a long time, a really long time.
May I speak?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I can actually accept the fact that it might take more time before this appears at our March meeting. So I will open the discussion with Ways and Means, but I would like to see whatever paperwork is available by April. Give us a whole month. And I understand about hard copy and digging downstairs in the vaults and everything else, and what a scary, what a scary endeavor it is. But I would very much like to, I'd like to see that project.
Right, and there's only so many people that have access to the old system. I'm not one... Believe it or not, I'm not one.
All right, Kathy, did you want to add some?
There was a recent public records request that we provided the information to, so perhaps we can review that information. It's also available on our website through our Next Request program. I don't happen to remember the public records request number off the top of my head, but I can look into that and get that information to you, for you, and go from there, if that is helpful, Liz.
Oh, yeah, no.
Because it all should be provided in that.
Right, that's everything we had at our hands. We could run out of the current system and pulling the invoices, so that we did provide.
So, sorry, President Gilmore, may I speak?
Yes, please do.
So I believe, and this is from the public records request, that the other system was searched by someone who has access to it, and we were told that there were no documents in there for the public records requests. So we closed the request, because there wasn't anything.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Chris.
Thank you. So I appreciate what everybody's done, and Kathy, whatever you have, I'd be interested in taking a look at it.
Easy to download, and if it's too large to send it to you, it'll be put on the Google Drive, and we will notify you of that information being put on the Google Drive.
Thank you. I guess I have to ask a question. President Gilmore, this may not be the appropriate venue, but I understand the differences between different systems and how difficult it is to retrieve when you go from one system to another. I get that. I also understand that there's, you know, are tons and tons of paperwork and everything else in the vaults. I understand that. My question, however, is in regard to record keeping, and why it's so difficult to access or get some of these records back, when clearly, I know the clerk understands the schedule for record control, and I know that she's got a schedule and everything else, and I know for a fact that you cannot destroy unless you have, you know, you cannot destroy records unless you have permission from the Secretary of State's office. So it's a comment, it's not a criticism. I understand many things that go on, but it just seems to be so difficult sometimes to retrieve records. So that's my comment.
Yes, Liz?
Thank you, Sheila. So part of the issue is, you can have multiple account numbers, and we don't even know what vendors we're looking for and what account number we're looking for. It's easy, if you have an account number that says we want property, and you can run off the invoices, and you can go pull those invoices. That's not what happened in there. So we don't even know what vendors we're looking for, what account numbers, it isn't one account. So that's why it's so difficult. You know, we've actually asked people who were around during the period to help point us in the right direction.
Council President?
Yes.
May I? I just want to ask a question to Liz. It's not a question, really, it's just share of comment. So actually, what I'm thinking about is that because it was a huge project, it would have had a project number, like, you know, like, 8403, whatever, to identify that project number. So are you saying that the invoices and everything else to this can basically go from general fund to water and sewer to, I don't know, to whatever? In other words, they're different funds as well as different accounts?
Correct. So the only thing I would tell you to, though, is from water and sewer especially, it takes council vote to utilize funds in that way, you know? So everything, you have council vote, but the way this works is you usually set an account number up to etch the council vote, because that's what auditors come in and look at, you know? And I'm sure no one at the very beginning of the launch project ever thought it was going to be the massive, ongoing project it became. When I, and none of us have the history of it, which is another difficult aspect. Again, if we knew the exact vendors involved, which we did try with one individual who was around during that period, we were able to pull some things, but if there's not something that says, oh, this was the lump property, how are you going to find that down in the basement?
If this was happening today, this wouldn't be hard to find, because we have much...
Right. Kathy has her hand up.
I didn't intend to, my apologies. I was probably just...
Oh, okay. It's okay.
President Gilmore?
I don't know. I do have a lot of sympathy for you, Liz, because I work in student records at UMass, and we have old records down in microfiche, and every once in a while, we get a student who dropped out in 1973, who decides that it's on their bucket list, they're going to come finish their degree. And I have the joy and pleasure of building these records, because the other staff in my office don't have access to some of the systems that you need to be able to do that. And it is not fun, but I know that my stuff is, you know, and this predates me, but when they switched over to the computerized system that I use now at work, and all these things were scanned in, we have a system that we use where I can search for a student based on their, you know, social security number or their last name or something like that, and it's going to direct me to that document, so that I can go down to the basement and find the microfiche.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering why we don't have something like that.
From back, from when they're starting?
We don't even... These documents have to be kept for a certain amount of time.
Pardon me?
And you can't just have a file box down in the basement, no one would ever be able to go through. And I'm sure for you, it would not be a file box, it would be stacks and stacks of microboxes, right? That's how it's set up?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness.
President Gilmore?
Yes.
Just to acknowledge, Councilor Elmer has had his hand up for a few minutes, and he's in the chat.
I'm sorry, I can only see six people at a time. I know we're just trying to formalize the meetings, but if you don't get recognized right away, please just pipe up.
You have to have the money to be able to hire the people to scan the records, and then organize the records. And I'm not saying that, you know, we're poor and woes us, but we're a municipality, we don't have the money to do that.
I will say, sorry, President Gilmore?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I will say that our technology director has been looking into scanning software, and we've been trying really hard to get them placed, because it is very hard to locate things and time consuming. So we have, and we have a space perspective, you know? So it's been looking, but you have to realize that we're talking about a long time ago in trying to locate some of this.
So is it so far back that it couldn't be audited, though? Because it seems like there would have to be something for an auditor if we ever got caught.
Yep. Mid 18... We are audited here, and they don't, you know, it is an audit of particular, if you're ever on parade, it's a selection process, so it's not, they don't get every single invoice. It's a selection process. However, even, I think some of this timeframe is, we actually could have destroyed it. I don't think they did, but I do think it falls under the, it could have been destroyed because of the time that has passed. The only thing you keep forever is defined by public record law. You don't, if you saw the massive amount of invoices that we paid, you don't keep 20 years' worth of invoices. Right? You just don't.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I don't know, Councilor Ford, you would protest, oh, no, I'm sorry, Councilor Elmer wanted to, right?
Yeah, if, could I, whatever is discovered, we send also to EDC, we have an interest in this. Thank you.
We can send it out to the full council if that's acceptable.
Yeah, let's send it to the full council, because I think everyone's kind of watching this topic right now.
Or you could always check, just one moment, please, public records request 22-26, but I can send you that information tomorrow, or let you know the public records request number.
Okay. Chris, did you have more for Ways and Means?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, John, moving on to you, CRE.
I don't have any, we got through our agenda items, so the only question is if we wanted to leave it there in case we needed to review the resolution that's being crafted.
Well, that's a good point. Yeah, so let's keep the meeting on the books, we'll have that. Is someone speaking, or am I hearing an echo?
It's like an echo or feedback of some kind.
Okay. That's probably me, I'm sorry. So, yeah, let's leave the meeting on for this month, we'll put that on the agenda. And then I know there were some folks who wanted to talk about affordable housing in Greenfield, did they want to come back in March, or were they talking about coming back in the summer? Because they weren't able to join us last night.
In talking to them, we had talked about April or May.
Okay. All right, so we'll leave this on for the resolution, and if the resolution is not drafted in time, and, you know, it's going to have to be five days ahead of the meeting. So if that's the case, then we'll just, I guess we would just cancel. I'm sorry, Chris, did you want to weigh in on that? Oh, you're on mute.
What resolution, may I ask?
Oh, shoot, I don't have it written down, but it's, the idea is that they're going to resolve to, with the city council's support, to give the council president the backing to approach the attorney general to look into investigating Mr. Burrell's practices involving his properties.
Yeah, so what I was saying is that I don't feel like I can speak, like, with, you know, I think if you're going to put a title by your name and call an official, I feel like that needs to have the backing of the city council. So if the city council votes on this resolution, then I'm happy to do that. If it gets voted down, then I don't feel like I have any business, you know, suggesting that I'm speaking for the whole body if I'm not. So that was where we landed last night at CRE.
And it did have the unanimous support of the committee. But obviously, the language of this resolution is kind of the important part, and I think the thought was to keep it very simple and not get too...
Yeah. Yeah, because one thing that we're saying is, like, we want this to be very, you know, we want this to be drafted in writing, because one councillor mentioned that it might need to go for legal review, because it's about one individual. So I want to see what it looks like on paper before anything, and then it'll come to the city council. So, were there any more questions about that? And jump in, because like I said, I can only see a couple of people at a time. All right, so that's the end. I do have a question for the committee. Since we're going into budget season, I know that in years prior, I don't remember if we did this last year, but we did cancel a lot of our subcommittee meetings during budget season, so that councillors were free to attend the Ways and Means presentations. And I feel like that's really useful, even if we're not allowed to ask questions of the department heads during the presentation. I feel like it saves them a lot of work, so that they don't have to come back and then re-present the same information that they already presented. How do people feel about that?
To answer your question, I think it was very useful to listen to those meetings. I'm not sure it's necessary to cancel subcommittee meetings to make that happen. That's my opinion. And I have one more thing about EDC when we're done here.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm not married to the idea of canceling the meetings, I just know that there was a rationale that, you know, in the past, we kind of approached it, like, if people had a little more time on their hands, it was easier for them to make themselves available. Kathy? Oh, you're on mute.
Here I am. I also wanted to mention that GCTV is posting on their YouTube channel, subcommittee meetings, including last year's Ways and Means budget discussion deliberations. So if councillors weren't... last year's Ways and Means budget discussion deliberations. So if counselors weren't able to attend the meetings, virtually attend, then they could always view the meetings through GCTV's YouTube channel.
Okay. Well, it doesn't sound like anyone's really clamoring to, you know, cancel their April or May meetings. So that's fine with me. If people change their minds, you know, we can always talk about it at Committee of Jurors next month. But. Yeah. So that's, um, Phil, you wanted to go back to EDC real quick before we go into the clerk report?
Yeah, if I could. I just wanted to get marijuana on the agenda. Uh, I'd asked Director Torog to prepare an update. And as it happens, one of the properties we're, we've gotten a letter from somebody who lives near one of the proposed properties on Country Club Road and I just wanted to get the ball, since I had the report, I wanted to deliver it. That's it.
Yeah, I think that'd be a great thing to put on EDC. Um, and I got the same letter that you did. I also got another one from another neighbor. So this is something that's generating some interest in their, their neighborhood. Kathy?
So would the subject for discussion be marijuana on Country Club Road or private grow, public grow?
Just, just marijuana. You know, I, I don't want, I, I didn't want to, they have to take it to planning board before anything happens. And the butters will have a chance to speak there. I think that happens first on that particular spot. But I do have a report on, there are 19 properties on the list. Two have been withdrawn. Uh, one has been asked for by two companies with the same email address. Anyway, it seemed like it was worth catching up on where we were.
Was it the report he emailed to you the other day?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And I like the idea of keeping it general. That way if residents are confused about which specific area we're talking about, then they don't get, you know, that it's not out of bounds to talk about it.
Thank you.
Good.
Thank you. Um, Kathy, do you want to wrap this up here?
Nope. You're all good.
You don't have a report for us? Oh, okay. Then we just have.
I don't have a report for you.
Okay.
Can I, I, can I interject? I'm not going to let us all go yet. I'm sorry. Um, Kathy, as we're talking about civility and conduct and all of that, there's a couple of things that I just would like to see come forward. And I'll go through President Gilmore course, but Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20. Um, Chapter 268 deals with the, how to conduct a, a meeting within the council parameters. And it also talks about some of the authority. Also, Mass Municipal Association Best Practices, January 2020, Volume Five, Number Three, has a list of suggestions adopting a code of conduct for appointed and elected officials, which could be helpful in this situation.
Beautiful. So does that outline anything other than, like, is there more available to us that I'm not aware of? Or is it just kind of, these are guidelines for?
It's guidelines. It's also best practices as suggests we adopt a code of conduct for appointed and elected officials as Counselor Ford suggested. But MMA has worked on this piece, which could save us a little bit of time in getting to either the suggested code of conduct or for you and I to look through. But there are some pieces that might be helpful. But I agree with you, President Gilmore, there's not a lot that we're not aware of.
Okay. I'm looking for the magic wand.
I'm looking to, and I will.
For the easy button?
I'm on it.
Yes, easy button.
We sent that Mass General Law chapter around to appointed boards and commissioners a while back. So from the mayor's office. So thanks, Dan.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. So the draft agenda, okay. Appointments and reappointments first, then the proposed zoning amendment. Let's see, easement. And then all the first readings. Is that all we have? That really seems like a light agenda.
It does seem like a light agenda. So it, you know, we may have something else come, we may have something coming from A and O. Depending, no, I'm sorry. The rules of procedure were, are going to be delayed. Is that correct?
To my.
Okay, yeah.
There's appointments and we'll have.
The fire department. The fire department civil service vote.
Yes.
Okay.
But it, it is a fairly light agenda. Don't say anything, because it may change.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't missing something because I tried to bounce back and forth between looking at the WebEx screen and looking at the draft agenda. Um, but I will say, looking at these first readings, Chris, I hope that you pour yourself a really tall pitcher of water because your mouth is going to be dry. Farm it out to some of your committee to help you.
Yeah, we'll break it up on Ways and Means.
Just remember, you don't need to read the motion. You just need to read the shortcut. And.
Marla, Marla, add something.
Yeah, I'm sorry to have to chime in. I just wanted to point out Bullet 22. The, uh, the sewer appropriation for 150,000 states for Sanderson Street, but it's for West Street Phase Two. The financial order is correct, but this agenda states Sanderson Street. I just wanted to point that out so it doesn't travel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, that is exactly, you might've just saved us a lot of partying. Thank you.
Sanderson Street is rolling. You'll get the update. We don't need more money for that right now.
Great. All right. Um, did anybody have anything else? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sub move for you.
All right. All in favor?
Hi.
Bye. All right. Have a great night, folks. I'll see you soon.